So I am going to call the committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Education, Groton Board of Education, to order. It is 6:01. And it's June 20th. Welcome, everyone. Welcome, everyone. The first agenda item is the approval of the committee of the meeting minutes for May 16th, 2022. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move that.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, here we know discussion. All those in favor of the passing of the committee of the whole meeting minutes on May 16th. Please say aye.
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 Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. So the next agenda item. Hi, Bev. So the next agenda item is the discussion of the board members' replacement process. So this is actually really our first meeting that we have had since we've had an opening where we could have put it on the agenda where we had an opening for the board placement. And I'm cosent of the fact that we have three people who have put in their application and their desire to be considered for that vacancy. I know that in hearing from other people and also hearing from myself or talking to myself, which I do quite frequently, is the concept of is there people that we know that we know of? Or are there ways that we can kind of identify emerging leaders? Whether it's parents within the school system, whether it's people who are interested in doing some things around town, but are a little bit intimidated by the election process, but that it would give them two years to kind of get to get the knowledge of what's happening on the board. Excuse me. To get to get working knowledge of the board and the potential of continuously servicing the town. And so that's sort of what where I am coming from. And I'm just interested to hear about what the process or excuse me, I'm just really interested to hear about what other members are thinking or feeling on this. So I'll open it there. Dean, yes, it's in.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I'm looking for the button to do this, but I'm gonna do it for real. My first question is, has the DTC made a recommendation?
No, actually, I've had no communication with the Democratic Town Committee. I also haven't pursued it because once again, even though it seems like it's been such a long time and there's been so many things that have happened, we are really only one meeting cycle out of since we had the resignation on the board. But that's not the, I mean, it just according to the policy that we have. And then also when I was looking at the Connecticut General regs, it really just has to be someone from the party of the vacancy. But that is really the guidelines that we have.
It's just traditionally, it's been courtesy. Just didn't know whether we had anybody that they'd thrown up.
Well, Kim, can I jump in real quick because I'm on the Democrat Town Committee?
Absolutely, Beverly.
Okay, they will not, they are not going to make a formal recommendation. They have just advised people to send their applications directly to the Board of Education.
And which, and which three people have done that? So we do have three people, but once again, I am just wondering if there are other, other ways or other, other, other people that we can also kind of consider? Because once again, I feel like this is such a great way of getting people to kind of test their waters of being involved in the community. And so I'm gonna, I'll recognize Andrea and then I'm gonna recognize Beverly.
Maybe I'm just, you know, unclear. I'm unclear, actually, on what you're asking for. Are you asking for actual names right now?
I'm asking for the board to identify the process. If they, if they have names and they prefer not to throw it on there, they can, they, they can kind of, they can, they can contact me and I'd be more than happy to have them put together their resume and we can then interview. I am just really looking for the process that the board would like to pursue. I'm gonna recognize Beverly and then Rita.
Thank you, Kim. Have we put out on our website or in the news on the Groton Times or Anyplace House that we're looking for a candidate to fill that vacancy?
Beverly, we haven't because once again, I really wanted to, we didn't have a process in place and the policy is kind of vague on that. So I wanted to kind of just get us all together. And if that's how we want to pursue it, then let's, let's do that. Once again, I'm just looking for some ideas around process.
Well, those would be a couple of my ideas.
And they're very good ideas. Thank you. Rita? Rita? So Rita, I just want to let you know, right now what we're experiencing is that we see that your hand is up, but if you're talking, we are not able to hear you. What are? What are people's sense of Beverly's recommendation? Which is to kind of put it on the, our district Facebook page, webpage, and just make like a formal announcement like in a newspaper, Groton Times or something?
Well, usually the process is passive. Names come to the board.
Right.
And the board considers the names. So what you're proposing, I think, is an active process. And what Bev has suggested would be part of the active process, which is to reach out instead of waiting. So I don't know. If we're gonna be active, then let's be active through channels.
Okay. Dean, thank you for sort of maybe stating the obvious, but it's, but it really is. It's the difference between whether we are letting people just come to us or are we actually sort of being actively involved? And, and once again, I just feel like, and this has nothing to do against or for the candidates that have put their names forward. It's just about looking at the golden opportunity to seeing if there are people that we could begin to get interested in community involvement. And this feels like a nice, safe way to do that. Matthew?
Thank you, Kim. It was a couple of months ago, and I think the topic was DEI and board functioning. And I'd suggested that if we are interested, if we are interested, I hope we are, in having a representative board, a more representative board in terms of the community makeup, that we might consider some way to have, and I call the farm clubs and try to interest people in possibly getting their feet wet and becoming familiar with the board. So I personally endorse making this an active process. There may well be some very fine candidates out there who are not linked to the Democratic Party in any official context, who may not have heard of the vacancy. And I think it would be great to, to advertise it. Secondly, I hope that when we have the interview process, we're a small enough group, we're under 10 people, that the interview process be a committee of the whole, that all, all of us participate in the interview process. And thirdly, for, you know, if we have three candidates or more candidates, they're not all gonna fill the one seat. And that we encourage anybody who applied and goes through the process to figure out, we figure out our own process first, as we have student observers, maybe people who are perhaps, would perhaps be interested in future board service, be they Democrats or Republicans or independents. We begin to think about how we can structure that. Thank you.
I'm also wondering, is there any value to seeing if the principals have identified some parents that are really active within the school community that, that may be interested in this, in this process?
Well, I guess if the process was more active, we could certainly get the word out there through the PTOs and that kind of thing.
Yep. Oh, Beverly, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Kim. I just wanna dittle what you said before about not being unhappy with any of the candidates. I'm very happy with all of the three candidates. But I think that we could reach out and see who else is out there. Like you said, that might not know that we're looking for a additional member. So I just wanted to say that.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, and then I, I'm also thinking too, and this is part of the process, is we should probably have a beginning, middle and end. Like, when do we sort of like, when do we stop our active phase? When do we feel like we are gonna be interviewing candidates and then voting them in? Because the other part to this vacancy is, is that we also are gonna need to also vote on a vice chair. That the person's not automatically gonna go into a vice chair position. We're gonna, we also need to kind of be thinking about that. So I, I'm, I'm gonna ask the board, do you have a sense about when? If, if, if we started tomorrow, where we asked the, we asked the school district to place both on Facebook and on, on the webpage as one, as the first step of that. And, and I think Beverly, you talked about the Groton Times. And if we asked if the principals had any thought process about a parent specifically that is once again, an emergent leader. I'm, I'm, I just feel that it's just, it could be a great time for us to, Matthew, to, to use your words, not as eloquently, but to really fulfill our DEI mission to, and to really cultivate new blood within the, within the party system, but with also, more importantly, with the Board of Ed. So what are we thinking about in terms of timeframe?
Well, believe it or not, July is around the corner.
Yeah, Beverly.
It's, it's unfortunate that this is at the end of the school year and we cannot use any of the school resources to find, to help us advertise for a candidate, like putting it on the school webpage or, I don't know if the schools still have newsletters. They probably don't do that anymore. But I don't know. I, I would probably think about September.
Um, so Beverly, you're talking about that we would have a new sitting board member by, in September?
Or start, or start interviewing in September.
We have a lot of our systems in place throughout this summer. So I, you know, we have resources and communications going on all summer long, so that can happen. But I agree, Beverly, that our goal would be to have someone, I think, by September. But I think certainly in July can be a very productive month to get the word out.
Matthew?
So following on Susan, if we were to say that we would be open to receive applications and letters of motivation until July X, 31st, whatever day we picked, that we would do our interviews in the month of August and have somebody appointed to take office by the first of September? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I, I think that's very possible. What are you thinking, Kim?
My concern is, is if the board has time. It's a, it's a, it's a slower time period for the board, but it's also a very active time period for the board. Because we have the board self eval that we're gonna need to do sooner than later. We have the evaluation for the superintendent that needs to happen. The summer is also a really good time for us to do some minor outreach. I think that, bless you, I think that we could combine some of these things. So it's not like every night of the week or it's not every week. But I, I do know that we have lots of other things besides just what kind of hits on the agenda. Not saying it, it's bam bam bam, but I just, I'm, I'm, I wanna make sure that we are thoughtful about the process. Beverly, you've been helping, this helps me a lot to hear about September. And so maybe it's the month, maybe it's the month of September, we finish up any interviewing that we haven't done in August, guys. And then, and then by a board, a board meeting, which would be the end of the month, is when we have our regular board meetings, we could vote for that person. It gives them three months to get really kind of inundated with board, beginning of school year stuff. But then they'll have three months before they have to go into the budget season. Is that palatable?
Sounds good to me, Kim.
Okay.
It is unfortunately a downtime. I like to think that the really active parents are active 12 months out of the year. But even for them, this is a downtime and they may not be looking. An opportunity may not occur to them. Is, other than PTOs, I mean, do we, do we have a, does the school district have a set of emails? So notwithstanding that they may, parents may not be checking the website. The district could, the board could reach out using email addresses.
School Messenger. We have School Messenger that, you know, will be sending out over the summer, even with summer camps and things that are involving families. Sometimes parents are real responsive to that and get those. And sometimes, you know, depending on how they have it set up, they might not be as much in the summer.
Matthew?
There's going to be, of course, because of the rules, as I've understood you say them, Kim, that this needs to be somebody who is a Democrat, whether or not. Because the replacement successor, not as, not a replacement for Katrina, the successor to Katrina needs to come from the Democratic Party. That needs to be explained in our communications so that we don't have angry people.
Right. You're gonna waste your time.
Yes, it is in our policy 9221. And, and, and absolutely, I can try to wordsmith something together. Is there a timeline that we want to give people that, that after a certain time period? Because I also want to be sensitive to the fact that we do have three people who have put in their application. But is there, is there a, a date where we say up until blank, the Board of Education would receive inquiries?
Are we able to do interviews in the end of July and August? Will we have enough people here as board members to do these interviews?
I think, Matthew, we would have better luck towards the end of August. September would be my guess.
Okay, so maybe the end of July, and give people a full month. There's also something called the Groton, I'm not sure that's formal, so it's called the Moms Club. It covers Groton, Stonington and Legerd. But there are a lot of Groton Moms in that and they tend to be pretty active people. That could also be a place to communicate with.
I don't like hearing my voice once. I can't imagine like how awful that was for you guys to hear my voice twice and echoey. I, I think someone, I think actually we is trying very desperately to try to get on because I recognized her number. And I think that that's what happened. Can I, um, I, I, this is, let me, let me just make sure that I hear what, what people are saying. Is that, yes, we would like to be able to sort of cast that as a little bit wider than what we have, that we have done to see if we can find emerging leaders. Um, I, let me think about all the different places, not to exclude the website, Facebook, paper. Matthew, you, you've mentioned the Moms Club. And then there's also the Community, Groton Community Forum. How about if I kind of put this all together and I send out an, an email to all of you to state what I think is the process with? And Matthew, I hear the end of July, I just think once again, summer is at such a downtime. I don't, I, I, I'm nervous about that, but maybe that's just me and someone else can kind of.
Whatever you want, whatever you want.
No, that's, no, that's fine. I just, I, I, I don't want anything. I want, I want a discussion. So, um, if, if that seems like that makes sense, maybe mid-August. And once again, I'll come up with a couple of dates and then people can kind of say yea or nay. Does that sound like that's fair?
That, that sounds fair.
Okay, so I will, I will put some thought to that and send that off to you. Thank you very much for your thoughts about that. And, uh, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm proud, I'm actually proud of this board thinking about how to, how to, how to find emerging leaders. And I think it's, I think it's a good thing. So the next, the next one, Susan, is expanding access to the IB. I believe there's attachment to.
Yeah, and I can, do you want me to pull it up? So I can speak to it? I've got Principal Keller here. And I just need to know if I can share the document. Looks like I can. Can you see it?
Yes.
So this was.
I mean, when I first looked at the PowerPoint, I was like, why does Susan have Christmas lights?
Those are light bulbs. We're turning on lights.
I know, I know. Sorry.
That's all right. That's all right. I just want to say to you that we get from this Connecticut State Department of Education newsletter on performance matters with a lot, it's chock full of information. And there's a whole page that they're recognizing the four districts, which I wrote about in board notes, who talked about expanding their higher level courses. And while our focus was IB, we also certainly talked about the others, ECE, AP. We have a whole group of teachers who are getting through the NIMZI, National Math Science Institute, specialized training in AP courses in every area, in STEM and ELA and in humanities. So I'm so proud of them and they actually get a stipend for it through this Department of Defense group that has done that. And we've really done an enormous job providing professional learning for all of our teachers. But our AP teachers really haven't had as much as they could use. And I think this is a good time to provide for them. And so, but our focus here for this one, the State Department request was that we talked about international baccalaureate. So Ted, are you here with me?
I am.
So we started out with just a little bit about who we are. You know, that community nestled between those two beautiful rivers. And being, you know, really mindful that we serve our, you know, the most military children in the state. And we talked about our Groton 2020, which was excellence, equity and efficiency. We gave them some data to look at. We're this beautifully diverse community, almost perfect, 50/50%. And, you know, at all of my wonderful awards assemblies and our promotion ceremonies and graduation, you just have to look out into those, that beautiful audience of our students and see how lucky we are. So this basically shows you that we have about 50% of the students white and then a variety of students from all different races that make up the students of color. So, you know, there were, there's always been some misconceptions about international baccalaureate being elitist. And since Mike Grenier and I came on board, we really wanted all students to know that this could be a program for them. And it's a, certainly a great foundation that many students who've been either taking IB courses or a combination of AP, IB or ECE, when they go off to college or career, they feel like they're kind of readyed because they've had this more rigorous and relevant education and they can write and they can speak and they can stand up for what they want to say and, you know, argue, debate, all those great things that, you know, are kind of required in real life. So we just really want to ready our students for the future and we want all kids to have access to all of these things. So Ted, you might want to start here with what you and I have heard from the students and Carmita has heard. You know, Dr. G and I heard through more than words and I think you were with us that last time and you heard the same thing. And Carmina's heard from the kids. Why don't more kids who look like me take these courses than I'm taking? So do you want to chime in here?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think that, you know, we, we've spoken with kids and, and, you know, one of the things that you're gonna find in this whole presentation and the conversations I've had with Kelly going forward is that we've got to get our kids to start, number one, wanting to be in the program. But we also want our kids to, to talk about the benefits of the program. And I think you're gonna see that as a common theme going through is that really the plan moving forward, you know, obviously I talked to the board earlier this year about increasing the numbers in all of these courses. But really start to get the kids talking about the benefits. Because, you know, the adults talk about it and, you know, the kids say, okay, yeah, sure. But when kids talk about it and say that this is such a great program for them, that the, you know, we want to make sure that they, they hear from their peers. And, and I think that, again, it's, it's, it's one of those things where perception becomes reality. Just as Susan was saying here is that, you know, the kids feel like, well, this is an elitist program. This is only for these particular kids. And that the kids are gonna be in classes and if, you know, if I'm, you know, a student of color, then, then I'm not gonna see students like me in those courses. And, and, you know, we want to get away from that, say, you know, no, we want to open this up for, you know, students that really can benefit from these courses and, and should challenge themselves in these, in these particular courses. So, you know, I think that, you know, as, again, as Susan moves forward with the presentation, you'll see that we, we want the kids start to talk about this. We want to start having those, those conversations. And, you know, the, the students feeling like, well, I'm not prepared to take those courses. Well, yes, you are, you know, the, we, we, we're targeting the students and saying that you can do these things. And, and that, yeah, okay, maybe, maybe this is gonna be a step up for you. But we're gonna give you the support to help you with. And I think that's the, the big thing is that students feel like, well, you're just an IB and that's, you know, you're, you can do it by yourself now. Well, no, they, they need that, they need some support and they need to have some, to work with them because it can be a very challenging program. And, and even when students are just deciding to do the full diploma or they're deciding to maybe take some IB courses, you know, they want to make sure that they have that support. So, yeah, we want to, you know, kind of fight these misconceptions that this is an elite, this is only for certain kids, that this is something where not every kid can be successful. And that, you know, we, especially now that we're, we're working through the NYPD, students should be more prepared for these courses and be well versed and be able to do these courses. So I think that that's something that, that I, that's a conversation with. Again, you'll see that as Susan goes through the presentation here, you'll see more of that, that theme going through.
And we're really pleased that we have so many different options for kids. They can take some IB courses with AP courses. They can take ECE and we're even looking to find those UConn, you know, to find out where UConn. You know, to find out where UConn matches up with both AP. And IB so that they might be able to get UConn credit on top of getting a certificate or, or an AP exam. At a three to five, so it counts. So, and I think that you're, you, you know, what was key for me was that when kids express themselves to Dr. G and to me and to Carmita. We asked them, what do they think would work? How do we get the word out? And they wanted to be part of the solution. They wanted to go into CTLs and they actually mapped out a plan to let their friends know. That this is really available to them and the benefits of it, and they wanted to see a more diverse group. Of students taking advantage of these offerings. So I couldn't be more proud of our students. And that activism and that sharing their voice is so important. So one of the things they were saying to us at the end of the IB at the little ceremony was, this is more than filling in dots on an. On a multiple choice test. This is taking my voice, using it, calling to action. You know, being able to write and read and research and do something with my knowledge. So that to me was really what it's all about. I would like every student. Who comes through our doors in our school to feel that way at the end, um, when they're ready to launch, lift off, as I said. So, um, as you know, um, Ted worked with, you know, central office, he worked with the team, his team. And they came up with a plan and he said, it's going to be a starting board, but we're going to get better at this as we go along. And we actually did a very fine job when we looked at the enrollment numbers. In some cases, they doubled in different classes. And so we, we really increased our numbers and we increased our diversity. In, you know, all areas, including IB. But we do believe that the NYPD for all kids six through ten is a huge component of this, that they're used to. This is the level of work they all are expected to do. And, you know, the plan is a lot of communication and we have bigger plans for next year. Communicating with families and kids, starting when they come to school. You know, in August for orientations and September. To really identifying and letting them know the career pathways, the opportunities are amazing. And we do have a career counselor with Chelsea Courtwright, who's really on top of this and. Really, she's already worked with some of our kids in fifth grade. She's worked with some of the children who are in the Apex Program. And helped them. So she's already been, um, really excited to work with kids. And of course, the grants that support this work are important. Um. And then, you know, we, our teachers building relationships with kids and every student having someone who's a go-to person and a counselor that they can really. Talk to about this is most important. The access for algebra, we don't want algebra, algebra to be a gatekeeper. I want all kids to have that experience to be algebra ready. Um, and so we're, we're doing all kinds of programs around that. Um, even our dream box has an algebra readiness component to it that we want all kids to experience. And we don't want anything to hold them back. And I guess this is just a statement about IB and the IB programs. And how they enable teachers to develop resilient, self-motivated young people. I don't know if it's only the teachers, it's teachers, parents and the kids themselves, um, who, who find this in them. And, you know, the major components for IB, NYPD, CP. Um, is really that inquiry-based approach, that real-world application, the research and development. A lot of writing, a lot of reading. So it's important that kids have those basic skills early on. And I've said, it starts in pre-K. And we need to have the strongest programs we can for all of our children as they come to school. And then there's the CP program, and I'm going to talk about this a little bit more. But the careers program is, is really all ready to lift off as well. And Ted and I can give you more information about that in just a minute. Um, but at this point, if anybody has any questions related. To IB. And these were a couple of the questions that the audience asked and we were able to answer. About really how ready kids are for coursework. In college, career, there are, I've said this before, that, um, a lot of the industry around us, including Electric Boat. They're taking kids right out of high school. Who've had some experiences and they're giving them amazing training. And they can come out with an associate's degree paid for by the company or more. So a lot of our students are finding other creative ways to get that education without going into a lot of debt. So, um, there's, I just want all kids to have access to whatever they want to do. So.
Does it, could I also add that, you know, I think that, uh, you know, I spoke to the board earlier this, this school year about some of the things we did, uh, started with to, to increase IB. But I think that, you know, Kelly's really working on, um. Increasing, uh, that communication with parents. And as I said before, you know, hosting things like student panels. Or that students can actually, I'm sorry, the phones are in here, but the, uh, um, the, uh, that we can have a student panel where parents can come in. And listen to students about their experiences with IB and why it's benefited them to be part of this particular program. Um, because this, again, you know, it, again, we, anytime you talk to these kids. Uh, about their experiences, they're the, the best sellers of this program that they're going to do better than any, anyone that we can. And, and, uh, so I think that, um, that's a really a benefit to us to be able to do, uh, things like that. Uh, we're going to be starting right from. Um, you know, and, uh, and having informational sessions for our students during the open house as well. Um, and then, um, you know, trying to have, uh, uh, excuse me, uh, information for our parents for, during open house, during conferences. Uh, same thing. Uh, and then when students are looking at this, you know, being able to talk to students that we have in the programs right now and alumni we're looking to bring in. To talk about their benefits in this particular program. So I think that, um, you know, it's really about, uh, just educating people about this program. Uh, I keep saying it that, you know, almost everyone that went to high school had AP in their high school. So most, most people understand AP pretty well. Very few people went through a high school that had IB. And so it's, it's oftentimes, I think what we're battling against is the fact just not knowing. And, and not really understanding. And so we got to build that, uh, with our families. And I think the best way to do that is to the, the students that are actually in that pro, you know, knee deep in the program. So, um, I think that that's, uh, that's going to be a big part of it. And I think, uh, you know, the, again, the plan that Kelly has put together and, and we really mapped out. Uh, month by month, what we want to do, I think is really going to benefit us going forward. That we've taken a nice first step in increasing, uh, those, those numbers. But as I said to the board, uh, this is a really, I, I look at this as a, 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 a solid three-year program, a progress. That we need to make to really get these where they need to be. And, uh, good, good start, but, uh, but that was really a crash program to get it started. I think that, um, as we build some of these, these regular events in, I think it's really going to start benefiting us going forward.
Okay, thank you, Ted. Anyone with questions?
I see Beverly has her hand up.
Thank you. Um, again, I hope that since we are encouraging all students to go into this IB program. That we are definitely getting, giving them the support that they might need or going to need. Because I would hate to, uh, I, I, I don't, I don't want to feel like we're just trying to get these kids into this IB program. Uh, to get our numbers up because our numbers are low in that program. And because of that, we might do away with some of the classes or. And that we need to get more diversity in those programs. I, I'm hoping that our heart is really in, in this for the right reason. And that we really want the students to do well. And saying that, that we are going to give all the students the support that they need.
I couldn't agree with you more, Beverly. And I think because we've had this opportunity to really implement NYPD middle years program in the middle school and in grades nine and 10. We've seen how successful all of our students have been with it. And a lot of it is dependent on very good collaborative planning from our teachers. And really some interdisciplinary connections, so it makes sense to kids. Um, and finding things that they're really passionate about, you know, uh, that they want to work on. So there's some choice in there and there's some independent study and projects that they can work on, that they really care about. You know, community projects and that kind of thing. So, um, knowing that, you're right, we need to support them. They may take a, a few different kinds of courses, IBAP, ECE. They might take, um, you know, an IB diploma. But whatever, and then the careers pathway, whatever they choose, we hope that they'll be able to. Really help, it'll help them into their future work, finding out what they love to do, what they're passionate about and what they're good at. The more opportunities for that, the better in school.
And my other thought, Susan, is, uh, when I read on the page, so why IB? And it says balance and inquiry-based approach to learning. I think all students should have that, not just IB program.
Right.
Reflects real-world application and skills, all students should be having that, not just IB students. And, uh, student to succeed in college and beyond, all students should have that. So this page here should be for all students, not just IB students.
Well, I think that's what IB, the actual international baccalaureate program. Um, advertises, but we certainly have all of our students doing that with NYPD. And we have courses in ECE and IB and AP. And even our honors courses and college courses that also do all of those things. So you're right, it's not just limited to IB for sure.
And I'd just like to mention, Beverly, in terms of your first, uh, comment in regard to the support. Um, you know, it's, you're absolutely right, um, one hundred percent agree. Uh, the, uh, the fact of the matter is, is that we can, if we don't give the proper support to the students that are going into this program, they won't last in the program. So it will be ultimately unsuccessful for us to increase the numbers without offering that support. Because, uh, the students simply, uh, you know, would not be able to complete the program. It's a very, very difficult program. It's, it's, it should be. It's, it's a challenging program. Um, but we want to give those students support so they'll stay in the program and go through the entire program. And ultimately succeed and it's going to benefit them going forward. And, uh, you know, it starts with the IB coordinator and the TOP classes that they're working in. And then we want to make sure that we're, it supports through, through other, uh, aspects as well. So I think it's, it's something, you're absolutely right. If we don't have that support, then i- if they don't have that kind of one-on-one support, that it's, it's not going to be successful going forward. So. You're absolutely correct.
I would have to say too, one of the big benefits I see for kids is that peer collaboration. That they do team up and sometimes students can learn from one another better than anybody. I remember even going off to college and feeling like, you know, that was kind of a life preserver. Of course, we would have to go to the professor every now and again for some little extra help. I was a math major on the side. But I think my think tanks and my peers was a great way to learn. And you see a lot of that at the middle school and high school, that collaborative work between the peers with. Really structured conferencing and teaching from the teacher.
Well, thank you for working so hard on making this work. Thank you.
I'm, I'm determined. I am determined.
I'm going to recognize, um, Andrea and Rita, please.
In that order. Okay, thank you. I have two questions about what I'm looking at on the page that says what students say. And the first thing is, uh, what are the numbers? How did the numbers, have they gone up or, or have they gone down in membership in IB?
So I would say over, um, the pandemic, we saw the numbers starting to go down. And I don't know if that was just because maybe there wasn't as much support, you know, people, we were out remotely, we were doing hybrid. But we did see that, um, in the next full diploma program, that it's jumped back up to the numbers prior to COVID. So it really did double.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, as I look at that, what the, the students say, it's, it says that they're influenced by their teachers and counselors. And that really is of concern to me, you know. I would never want, uh, anybody to say, well, you know, I don't know if you really do this, you know. What do they mean when they said they were influenced by teachers and counselors?
I, I think the, I think the real message was they're influenced by the adults in their life. Okay? So I know they said that parents definitely could encourage kids. Teachers that they cared about, that look, they look to as mentors and counselors that they go to. Are really instrumental and encouraging kids, people that they have a relationship with. Not just any, anybody, but people that they have built relationships with can encourage them and, you know. And let them know that they can do it and they believe them.
We, all of us should be saying that.
We.
And we should, all, we all have to believe that.
I know. You're right. You're right.
Okay, that's, that's all I have to say.
Rita. So Rita, if you're talking, we're not hearing you.
Can she put it in the chat box maybe?
She's, I, I believe she's not at home and she knew that cell phone's, um, service was not going to be good. So I'm just really appreciative that she is here. Rita, I also am wondering if you muted your screen, but then you went onto your cell phone. Whether we would then not get the echoing. I am no tech person by any stretch of the imagination. Susan, while we're, while we're contemplating this, um, would you be willing to offer us the numbers? Or, or you or Ted, about, about the increase you mentioned at the beginning. Um, is that they've expanded or they, you know, there's some that have, I think that that, that's a nice context for people to have.
I think Rita is.
Hi Rita. Yeah.
I'm sorry, Kim, could you repeat your question? I, I, you were breaking up on me there a little bit.
Um, so the question that I had was, um, when Susan was giving the original part of her, of, of her present, of the presentation. She did mention that there was an, in expansion or increase in participation in the IB programs. And I, and it just would be kind of cool to kind of hear what the numbers were. I understand.
Kim, can you hear me yet? Kim, can you?
I can. I can.
Say something. I keep hearing all these beeps. Um, yes, I, I really would like to not see this expanding access to IB courses. It should be IB, AP, ECSC. I, it, it just was very upsetting to see the focus only on IB.
Can I just tell you, Rita, this was a presentation that we gave to the State Department of Ed.
I know, I know.
The others have done the others, but we have expanded numbers.
But I haven't ever seen anything focused on AP. Or the UConn courses, as you have the energy.
So the topic for tonight was access to IB. We certainly have done the same in the plan for AP and ECE. But our topic for the State Department was really showcasing the IB. And that's what we put down as the topic for the board. So you can hear about that. But I have included, and I don't know if you've heard me completely, but I have been including the other advanced courses as well.
And I, I do want to mention that, uh, you know, as, as earlier, when I presented to the board this, uh, this year. You know, we talked about all the courses that we're looking for increase in all the courses. And I think that, that's one of the things that, you know, we really are working on at the high school, that this isn't a battle between a kid that, you know, they're either going to do AP or they're going to do IB. We want to do what's best for that particular kid and that, and there's, we want to make sure that we pick the best possible program. And some students, the AP is going to be the best possible program for them, or the ECE. And some students, the IB and, and, but we want to make sure that students understand everything so they can make the best possible choice. And, uh, I think that, you know, again, I don't have the numbers in front of me right now, so I could certainly get those for the board. Um, but I think that you'll see that we've seen good increases in everything and that's what we want. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, so it's not just like, oh, we're just going to increase a, we're just going to increase these. And that's going to lead to a decrease in this. That, that's not what we want. We want to get everything to go up. And, uh, and that's really the focus that, that we're going on and, and really the, the mission that, that Susan's given me. Uh, to, to really push all of these courses. And that's where our focus is going to be. It's not a battle between, we want to make sure that we're, we're, we're working together on this.
Thank you, Ted. That's, that's so accurate.
Yeah.
And so maybe that, maybe instead of just. And so maybe that, maybe instead of just giving the numbers for the IB, maybe if you can just throw in.
Yeah, that's what we would do. We've actually looked at all of the numbers, you know, we didn't just look at one or the other. We looked at them all.
Super. Any other questions about this piece? And once again, how neat that our, our district was being highlighted like that.
One of four. I was really proud. And the team did a really nice job. We got a lot of praise and the shout out in this Performance Matters newsletter. So I was very pleased with how it turned out.
If I'm not hearing any other comments, can we move to the world language, the next agenda?
Can I have one question?
Absolutely. Sorry.
Susan, how many other districts have IB programs?
Well, as far as having the amount of IB that we have, we have the IB diploma for over 20 years. We have the IBCP and IBMYP, which was authorized in the past three years and last year. And there are very few districts that have all of that. There are districts and they're growing districts. We learned from Department of Defense Education Activity Group that we had, the conference, that many more DOD schools and schools that support military children are very interested in International Baccalaureate as it was something set up by diplomats and military folks so that kids would have a more common, rigorous, relevant experience. And I've had a lot of colleagues reach out to me right here in, you know, southeastern Connecticut and throughout Connecticut, very interested in International Baccalaureate. So I feel like it's something that's growing and it's, they're looking at it differently than an elite program and looking at it for something that would be really good for all kids.
Su- Susan, do you know if other districts have the same problem we have as far as getting students interested in the IB program?
It's actually a state initiative, Beth. That's why the state really wanted to do this. They are looking at our data and they're looking at data across the state and across the nation. And this is a problem that we, we want, we want really to have the same outlook that we have in all of our schools down to the classroom so that it's representative of all of our community. So, and it hasn't always been. So it needs to be. And yes, it's being looked at very seriously.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? So, so we're leaving this agenda item with just you throwing maybe in the board notes sort of what the increase in membership of those higher level courses would be great. Thank you so much.
If I don't get it for this board notes, I'll try to get it soon. My student data manager is at Yale with his wife and having a third baby. So I will try to get you as much as I can.
Well, and I.
I'm not going to bother him.
And I, we also know, Susan, or at least I know, that next week you are also going to be taking a, a well-deserved and a break. And so I don't think it's, this is an urgent thing, but just so that we can get it would be helpful. But.
Would be happy to. Yeah.
That Tom has the right to.
Yes.
Be a dad. And you have the right to have a vacation. So.
Thank you.
I'm excited. All right. So then let's move on to the world language and global citizenship.
Okay, so I had written in my board notes on June 10th, and I probably said it to a few of you who I got to see and talk to, that the Department of Defense Education Activity Grant that we applied for this April, and it was called the nurturing global mindedness through world language instruction, was, got very positive reviews. Fortunately, we had colleagues from around the country, from Washington DC up to Maine and out to Syracuse, New York. And two of the people who are responsible for assisting us with the grant process and honoring the grants, you know, they really are, the directors of the DOD grant process were with us. And I wrote to you about how they felt it was very promising. And one of the things that I needed to verify was that not only did we apply for the JR NROTC grant, which is like a junior naval ROTC, but also the Naval, National Naval Defense Cadet Corps, which is another program, sometimes you don't get right into JROTC, you go into this other program first. And we did indeed apply for it last year. We knew that that was necessary in applying for the grant. We know it takes time. I have, and I'll be sending this in my board notes, but I have looked through all the board notes and COWs and, you know, I had Joyce really reviewing, you know, since Mike and I got here in 2014, but really started amping up around 2018, looking into applying for this and what was needed. And it is quite a competitive thing. And they don't always have the funding to support it. But we did apply. It's sitting at the Secretary of the Navy's office. So they did confirm that, which was good news and good news for the grant. That's all they really needed to know. The board does not need to vote until, you know, we've been authorized. And, you know, that has to come in first in order to have the board vote on it. And we'll be giving you more information. It can start small. You know, you can start with one class that can go through. And the good news is it can be part of our CP, our International Baccalaureate Careers Pathways in military administrative and administrative services. So that's something that Matthew had spoken about, you know? Could it be broad enough so that it could encompass things like the EMT and the police and the fire department? And certainly the career pathways show, showcase that that could happen. So, but we would start small with this. And as soon as I get information, I will pass it on to the board. And I do have my notes. I collected notes and dated a timeline of information for you that showcases all the times that we've talked about this and, and had discussion around it.
Jay?
So Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this really started years ago as a student-led request and maybe even a poll or a survey.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm wondering if when you do share everything with us, if that could be included.
Yes, I actually sent the results of the survey out to you in board notes with it to show you that 35% of the students that were surveyed, over 400 students were surveyed in the middle school. And over 35% boys and girls were very, very interested in having a program such as this.
Okay, I just don't want it to be forgotten that these clubs, you know, are something that sort of come up organically from the students. They're not something that we're sort of putting out there. But, you know, that, that it starts with their interest.
Right.
And I just didn't want us to lose track of that, because I know that started a long time ago.
Right. And, and we have some teachers who are still teaching, but maybe retiring, who might, you know, who've served our country and might really enjoy doing something like this part-time. So in the future, so we, we really need to gather the information. We had met with the subbase staff just last summer. Shannon Weigel had set that up. Ted and I went, I think Aaron went, and Tom Marigolino, who also serves our country and he serves our community as a counselor. So we got a lot of good information because in New London, they've had the program for a long time. And, and that certainly the captain at the subbase said he could do everything in his power to help support us, whether it's uniforms and getting uniforms from a thrift shop, the facsimile and the flags and the equipment that they use also he can help us with. So it was a really rewarding visit. And I think the community with the Navy base could come together to help support this getting started.
Matthew?
Thank you. I would like one bit of reassurance, if it's possible, Susan. I know that Katrina visited with you and I visited with you. And I don't think I'm speaking out of school to share one concern that the two of us had. And that was the possible presence of weapons, whether they're firearms or air guns on our campus.
No, they are facsimiles. They, they, they don't have any firearms that would ever be on our, on our.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It, you know, what they use when they do the, you know, the flags are, they use the flags, they use the facsimile. And to my knowledge, there's no firearms that would ever be brought to school.
Okay, and no air guns either?
No, not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
I mean, I think there's a, I think there's a place for them to learn those things, but it would be done on the base.
That's perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, safeties. Yep. It's actually, if you saw in the slideshow, which I'm going to go into next, on future career pathways, the government and public administration careers is an actual component to Connecticut Career Pathways. And that falls right in line with having what you had spoken about, Matthew, which is expansion. It could be military, it could be EMT, healthcare, it could be fire, but it's all those community partners that assist us every day.
So. So, so Susan, um, I just want to make sure that I, that I understand. So the board will be taking two votes relatively soon. One is for the, the, is it, will it be a club? Which is the, whether it's the Navy or the, I'm sorry, I'm not going to do the acronyms any good, so I'm not even going to try. Um, and we're also going to need to vote on the acceptance of the grant.
Right. So we're expecting the air good news soon. And, you know, I was hoping before I left town. But when we hear, we will bring that to the board's attention. And I can give them a, a more, you know, a more in-depth presentation, so you know all the components to this. And then as part of getting the grant and having the grant accepted, we had to apply for the JROTC and the government had to have it in their hands. They can't promise that we're going to get the ROTC or the Naval Defense Cadet Corps. That's something that goes through the, you know, Secretary of the Navy. So that doesn't, won't hold us back in any way, but it might hold us back time-wise in getting the course started. I would like to start with the club, no matter what, next year.
And that's what's you, that's what's sitting on the desk of the Secretary.
Right. That's exactly right. So they're kind of two different things. They were kind of in sync for the getting of the grant, but knowing that we've done our due diligence, getting it to the right people and having applied. And I think as much for the grant and as the students, because the students who had taken the initiative to create the survey and get it out to kids and to meet with others, they are going to be juniors and seniors, sophomores, juniors and seniors. So I'd love to have it happen for them.
Any other questions about, about this agenda topic? Hearing none, let's move on. To number six, which is the IBCP Career Pathways, Government and Public Administration Careers. Oh, that's a mouthful.
So Ann Keith Forbotnick had actually brought this to your attention and presented to you sometime during the COVID, you know, in the past year or so. And, you know, this is a, a program that really, it really encourages our students to become active learners, but to also pursue a career pathway or several career pathways during their schooling that they might be interested in. So it just helps them to think before they go off to college or before they go to get a job, what are those things they really love to do and what are they interested in? So I'm really excited about the pathway program. I'm going to let Ted talk to you a little bit about where we are at Fitch High School. I know that we're pretty well set with our nursing program. We're looking at Project Lead the Way. And certainly the culinary at some point. So I would say any of the career pathways could be linked on with courses in IB to become an IBCP program. But Ted, you want to talk a little bit about that?
Absolutely. I think that, you know, it's, it's, right now, it's something where we, we certainly have the, the bones ready to go for these particular programs. It's going to be a matter of us now building in the, the name of the course is right on the tip of my tongue and I apologize. But the, the course that, that helps them with these particular programs and builds in that the job shadowing piece and building up those, those community partnerships, so we have those. You know, we have a, a lot of opportunities for students that are in Project Lead the Way to have really awesome job shadowing experiences out in our programs. We already have that built into our nursing program, so it's already there. We already have those partnerships and our students obviously have been doing less of that over the last two years because of COVID. But we have those community partnerships with nursing homes, with L&amp;M, where students have been going out in the nursing program. So it's already there with the nursing program. So like every component's already there. But we, so the next piece is really building in, and then, I'm sorry, then there's the language in the workplace piece, which Kate Serio has done an absolutely fantastic job with and starting to build that into the curriculum so that, that students, it will have more ability to use those language skills in the workplace as well. So the last piece is really building that, that support, just like we're talking about with the IB, building that support in the, in the school where students will have mentors within the school to help them through the processes they're going through the CP program. So, because again, they're, they're doing the, the job shadowing, they're doing the, the reflective piece with the, with, with the entire program as they go through to finish up. It's just like the DP, there's a whole process that they go through with, and they really need support to go through that process. So I think that right now, if you, if you ask me like, okay, which CP program is like ready to go out of the box? Nursing is probably the, the most ready to go, just because we have those relationships already. But it's really going to be about with the, the Project Lead the Way, building those opportunities for our students next year. And then doing the same thing, obviously culinary, a lot of opportunities here in the, to do. And we already have the Safe Surf work that Chef Post is doing, that we'll, we'll be able to build that into as well. So we have a lot of the, the bones ready to roll. And I think that it's just going to be this, this next year, really making sure that we have all the, the whole process in place to get it, to get it moving. So.
And of course, manufacturing and engineering is so critical.
Yeah.
And you know, one of the things I'm excited about is the internship for kids, for sure, where they actually get to the workplace and they experience it. But the externships for teachers, where teachers go out into the workforce. And this can happen in the summertime, it can happen after school. And teachers then bring back the knowledge that they've learned from these different corporations and companies and workplaces. So, you know, I, I, really, the goal is to take every career pathway that we have. And a kid could get a certificate leaving. And that's another way that goes along with the resume for them to get in the door, to start work. And, or to go to college or a trade school after that and, and find the work.
Beverly?
Susan, do you know, I, I, I saw in the newspaper about Elagrosol Tech and how many of their students were, were was going to be working at EB? Do we have any students that are going to be working at EB right after graduation? Since they hire in 3,000 people or plus, I don't know the number for sure.
I have to check on that, Beverly. I'm not so sure exactly, but even the students who enlist in the, in the armed forces, if they, for instance, got the certificate with the ROTC or the National Cadet, they can join at an E5 versus an E1. So I think building these career pathways is the way we need to go for a large portion of our kids. And I don't know that we've had that many who attended the manufacturing pathways. Um, but I know that's an area that we want to grow. And so. The um Grosso has had a huge department for manufacturing like that. So they have had a lot of success. So I will look into that data for you.
Thank you. Well, keep up the good work on these career pathways. It sounds very exciting.
Thank you.
Matthew?
If my volume matched my enthusiasm for what Susan has been discussing. About expanding the career pathways to include government and public service, I'd be blasting you out of your seats. I.
I thought you'd get excited about that when I found it.
When I saw that today. Um, I had shared with you some particulars about how that might occur. And when I saw that today, I prepared something. To send to everybody today, but a very trusted angel told me. Matthew, be careful. If you send something to all the board members, we might have an illegal meeting. So I didn't send anything to you. Because I didn't want to risk violating the rules. With you allow me ninety seconds, I'd like to just. Give you a some broad strokes of a couple of things. There are scores more that we haven't looked at. Can can you spare the time, Kim? Thank you. So. I'm so excited about the idea of government and public administration careers. I call it public service. Um, and I think we all agree that giving students access to public service is useful at all levels. Even if a given student doesn't wish to pursue the CP protocol. Uh, we have the thing we showed today on this list. I guess you can't see its strengths and challenges. I'd love to be able to add to that college credits on a personalized basis. Such a broad approach fits neatly into our commitment to provide challenges and advanced courses. Across academic disciplines and across academic capacity. You know, if we can get students who are interested in. Animal care, some advanced classes in animal care. I just pulled that out of the sky. Or veterinary care and get them something where they get a certificate or college credits for it. What a wonderful way to help them with the career. Two such accredited agencies that offer these things are FEMA's Emergency Management Institute. Which has affiliation with Frederick Community College in Maryland and the National Fire Academy. Their offerings are obviously germane to those in emergency management, police, fire, public works EMS. Many of their classes like incident management, chain of command, have direct relevancy to anyone interested in military service. Beyond these, some of the classes they offer. Offer specialized courses in hazardous materials, radiological management processes. That might appeal to IB students with interest in chemistry, engineering, and even physics. Courses are free. Online downloadable materials are free. And though we will incur no additional staffing cost guidance, guidance. Counselors would need to gain some familiarity with the offerings to best help our youngsters. Learning is self-paced. Courses are divided into unit chapters. Each says, in this chapter, we will do X, does X. In this chapter, we did X. And then there's a self-administered quiz. At the end of the class, at your own pace, you take a a test. Some of them are proctored, some of them are not. There's no cost for this. If you pass the test, getting eighty percent, you get a certificate from FEMA or the National Fire Academy. For FEMA people with certificates for a ridiculously low sum. The figure was about twenty dollars a credit hour, but that's fifteen years ago. I'm sure it's not fifteen, but a ridiculously low sum. They can get a credit from Frederick Community College to bring to their school. Clearly, not all the courses are open or suitable for our students. I have got the course catalog and I made a first pass. Now that we've done this in open meeting, I will send some of these documents. I don't know if I sent them to you, Susan. I know I sent it to Kim. Uh, I'll send them to you guys and hope that all the everybody can look at them. Whatever diploma one receives after graduating Fitch. My belief, I think it's shared, and experience suggests. That when two otherwise equally qualified candidates apply for a job or a promotion. Such highly regarded credential certificates will open doors to useful. Financially secure positions in the public service sector. Thank you for your tolerance.
Thank you. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention my own career pathway of teaching. And I know Lori Lapine is on here, and part of our DEI initiative. Is to really have more of our own students come and teach with us in Groton. We've had great success with that. Um, we've had some great success with our interns. Who have worked closely with their mentors this year. But Lori, would you like to speak about the career pathway in teaching and how we're going to really try to make that grow? Maybe starting with the club next year and then enhancing that and moving on with that?
Sure. Hi, everybody. It's nice to see everybody. Um, we've been working on the teaching pathway. It's still in its infancy stages. But at this point, um, we've been actually meeting with high school students on their career evening to actually spend time with them. So that we um and also bring in other master teachers, experienced, well-experienced teachers like Carmita Hodge and. Jen Anthony and Renita Casey, who actually join us and talk to the students about opportunities with teaching careers. So. We've had um about, um, you know, I would say a small number, take advantage of those opportunities at this point, but. Certainly, we are seeing some interest. Um, who um seniors are going on to ed preparation programs and starting their path. So we're staying in touch with them. Um, we've talked about an after-school club as a way to um integrate. A teaching pathway to kind of start at a very small scale. And then the other thing we're going to take a look at is teach um teach.org is a Connecticut teaching website. Sponsored and supported by the State Department of Education. Sorry, my husband's mowing the lawn right inside the door. I'm sorry. Of course, it turns up now. Um, so um, we're they actually offer a free survey that we can provide to our students. So that we can assess their interest in teaching. So um, that's something we're going to be looking to partner with the high school with uh for the upcoming school year to see where we can. Take an opportunity to survey our high school students as a starting point. Find out how many interested, and then that will drive our um. Efforts around setting up an after-school club and some of the activities, allowing them. They currently do get an opportunity to be what's called a. Teaching assistant in the classroom. So that's a program that the high school currently has in place and has had for some time where they can. Be assigned to a specific teacher to be um somewhat of a teaching assistant in the classroom and get exposure to the opportunity. Um, so there's lots of good stuff happening as far as just um starting to move the process forward to. Generate some interest and excitement around teaching as we're in a pathway for our high school students and. You know, certainly knowing that we have a diverse population. This is an actual. Great opportunity for us to encourage those individuals onto a path of teaching, if that's something that they're interested in.
And the state of Connecticut has provided a curriculum and an incentive with Ed Rising, I think it's called. Um, so that we can take advantage of um some of the work the state of Connecticut has already done. And, you know, starting to develop our ideas for the the club and and possibly future courses. Um, Amy McKenna has always um had a course that's full with um children's literature, and she brings her class into the elementary schools. And they learn to do read alouds and work with students in small groups or individually with reading. So um, you know, it's a very popular course, and I think this is something that would be. Just a wonderful pathway for many of our students to take advantage of.
I I have a quick question. How different is that from when Mr. Diskin came in and talked about the? Um, the teaching club? Is that what you're referring to, Lori?
That is, that that's something that Adam has been working on for the high school. Exactly.
COVID slowed us down with some of our initiatives, so we're ready to go. And get back in the saddle for the kids to take advantage of this. Ted, did you want to say anything else about that, about the teaching pathway?
Yeah, well, I mean, it's something where, um, again, it's it comes down to, we we just have students that really are interested in these areas, like the ROTC piece. Um, you know, we have students that we've spoken to that that really have some interest here. And uh, you know, we want to make sure that that we're offering these these opportunities. So this is something where, uh, again. Um, you know, we have a program here that I think would fit very well within the high school curriculum. And uh, but we want to really make sure we vet it and 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 have a a good understanding how it's going to fit in. Um, the 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 fact of the matter is is that as we expand the CP program. Uh, it it's going to fit really well within what we're already doing uh within our career pathways. And I think that. Um, it really is just going to offer, it's going to enhance it more than anything else. So. Um, it's the the best part, you know, oftentimes when you look at a high school program, you worry that like, okay, I'm going to put this in and it's going to take away from something else. This enhances what we already have. Um, and so I think it's really a it's it's whenever we can. Build in these opportunities, we're not really worried about taking away because it's something that we already have in place and we can we can continue to build on it. So. Um, anything we can do to to really work on these these areas. And 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 really build up those elective courses too, I think is just going to be a real benefit to the high school. So. Um, I'm I'm very excited. You know, Adam's really been taking the lead on the teaching portion with Lori. Um, and I think that, uh, as you know, as as Susan said, as we move out of COVID, this is something that. That we can really see how we can build this into our what our regular uh program.
And it it really um enhances a student's portfolio. As Matthew said, to be able to have a certificate, to have had an internship, to have had some course credit. All of those experiences show that a student is interested and it really prepares them. Even to go into an interview with some knowledge. I think I see Dean.
Dean, oh, your hand kind of.
Yeah, no, it just just went up. So with respect to Ed Rising, and I don't want to make this an Ed Rising topic. I recall that it came up on the agenda twice. Once, the first time as an introduction, I had some questions. Then it appeared on the agenda the second time, but nobody appeared for it. Is this going to come back to the board, or is this going to be running on its own rails?
No, we we definitely will give you more information. Um, about it. Yeah.
I mean, was the was the agenda item to provide us with information or do or to look for approval?
I I I remember when we first introduced it, and I think people objected to the name. Um, but I I'm not sure what the questions were around it. I can't imagine that um there would be an injected objective objection to having a career pathway in teaching.
No, that in and of itself, of course, that's not objectionable. Right.
Right. So maybe it's, I don't know if it was the name, or we'd have to get the material for you to take a look at it, have to go through curriculum.
It wasn't the name, it was the materials behind it.
Oh, okay.
That I had questions about.
Okay.
Okay.
And also, there was a stipend issue too, because it was a new club. So there was no monies attached to it. Um, and so I think that was, but. But Dean, I think because it's a new club, the board should have some type of. Um, understanding about what it is. At least that's my thinking. Um, in terms of that were the policy. Um, but Andrea, I know that you raised your hand, and Lori, I know that you you came you came on screen. So. I but I'm going to do Andrea first, please.
As I recall, it had more to do with the fact that it showed up as something in place without board approval. That's what the problem is.
I don't think it was ever in place. It was just an idea.
I I don't think that.
It was not in place. No. I I thought it was the title or something was concerning about the title.
I could be wrong, but I don't.
Yeah.
Well, I think one of the things, uh, first of all, Ed Ri- Ed Rising or any uh teacher education program is not in place at the high school right now. Um, and I think that we certainly would want to make sure the board is is well aware. Of this, because this would be coursework that that would be going into the high school. Uh, and we want to make sure that. We're going through the proper procedure with the board and that before anything got put in. So. This is going to be a long-term project to really to to do this, uh, you know, and and get this in place. But uh, we certainly would want to make sure that. Um, you know, it it is, uh, as Susan said, we we want to make sure we get the proper approvals for it going forward.
Lori?
Yeah, I just wanted to share for the group. Um, I know the the Ed Rising curriculum that we've spoken about, it has not been implemented, but the state. Um, Department of Education has come out and they've been endorsing that curriculum as a. Um, an appropriate curriculum for the purpose of teaching students about the teaching pathway. So I just wanted to share that that was a fairly new development. Um, that they've come out and endorsed that actual, you know, curriculum product. Um, I know we haven't approved it in our district yet, but I just wanted to share that.
Sounds like we have an agenda item being developed. Um, and maybe Susan and I can talk about um the applicability of when that makes sense, like when we the district understands. Understands it so that they can begin to to really kind of talk about what that would look like. What does that mean? Um, but that would be my guess. Andrea?
But I I misspoke. Not that it was in place, but that it was um. Offered, that it was proposed to students as an offering without board.
Oh, okay. Yes, that sounds right.
Yeah, that that's that's, yeah, absolutely.
And we slowed it down.
It it did slow it down.
Yeah.
Any other conversations about that? If not, we are moving on to suggested future topics. Andrea?
The only comment I have is that I'm totally in in favor of it and enthusiastic about it.
I'd love to see a Martin Luther Scholarship around a teacher. Oh, if we could get one of those, that'd be awesome.
Yes, it would. And you would be make that you would make Dr. Mitchell one happy individual and me and me.
Some point about how we're doing on reviving the mentoring program?
So an update? Absolutely.
Thank you.
I actually have that down, Matthew.
Thank you.
Hmm, I have to think about.
That's okay. You guys can always send me your thoughts.
One of the things I might suggest is to look at enrollment data. We had given you a presentation starting from the October one numbers, but I asked Tom if he could disaggregate our data. Um, for the end year, so you could look at enrollment beginning and end and. Um, I thought that might be interesting for you too, at some point this summer, when we can be reflective.
Oh, can I say something? This just came to my thought. I received the email a while ago. And I meant to take it out about the trays that we use up at the high school in the cafeteria. And are they are they environmentally friendly? And are we getting away um from using, I don't know if we use styrofoam trays or what? But are we coming to more green for our environment than what we're doing now? Maybe that could be on the agenda at some point.
So you're talking about what we're doing, um. Uh, help me word it, Beverly.
Tray versus styrofoam. And that would be a good topic for um bring Ernie in, because he has some ideas on that.
But my guess is that it could go further than just trays, like what other environmentally friendly.
Yeah, like plastics and straws and all that jazz.
Yeah, I guess.
I like the more green. How can we keep it more green?
I just want to warn the board that Ernie could talk all night about that.
It is a good, it is one of his favorite topics.
Yeah, he loves that topic. So.
Matthew?
Uh, I sent a note to you and to Susan about a email I'd gotten. Where several of us had gotten from the League of Women Voters. or several of us had gotten from the League of Women Voters, about a free training course for faculty, uh, this summer. Their deadline for our making a recum for the boards, or the schools making a recommendation for teachers is July 15th. I don't know if that appealed to you or not, but I just want to be sure that you've at least had a chance to look at it.
I did. That sounds great. But that, that needs to sort of go to, um, the district to see if, um, there are people within the district that, that are interested in doing that.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. But that sounds exciting. All right.
It's time. Motion to adjourn. Mo- motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose, abstain, motion is carried. Good night, guys.
Good night.
Good night, Lucy.
I'll see you in the morning, Kim.
Got it.
Okay.
Good night, everyone.